Called to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors work session, June 30th, 2021, meeting to order. Ms. Watkins, call the role, please.
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here.
Good morning and welcome everyone here today. First item on the agenda is the COVID-19 vaccination program. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hathaway for this presentation.
Chairman and members.
Thank you. Jesse, okay. As you know, many, many localities across the country have been faced and have struggled with trying to get as many residents as possible vaccinated since the beginning of this year. New Kent County has worked very closely with the other localities in the Chickahominy Health District as well as the Chickahominy Health Department. And this has been a group effort to get our county residents vaccinated and truly a very successful effort, one that I've received various comments and compliments from our community. As far as the ease of the process, the ease of the registration, getting calls back and questions answered. I think we scored an A+ on our effort to vaccinate New Kent County residents. And you know, the great thing about this is the credit goes to not just one person. There were so many different people involved in this effort, so many county staff, residents who we're recognizing today, Board of Supervisors, state officials. It truly was a group effort. I'm going to ask Chief O'Pet to come forward with a few words on the vaccination. And then if the board has anything to say, and after that, we will present our staff and residents who volunteered in our vaccination efforts with an award, a token of our appreciation. Chief O'Pet.
Well, good morning. I too want to echo Mr. Hathaway's words here of the excellence that went into this program, the team that was assembled, and the good that we did in the county. It was phenomenal. It was devised from sitting around a room talking how we can pull this off to actually executing a phenomenal project. I can't say enough about the team, the folks who actually executed the plan, as well as everyone who came and assisted. In the emergency management field, one of the tools that they train us on is whole community. And I can absolutely say that this was a whole community effort from all the folks that Rodney mentioned, all the way down to the folks in the weeds who are actually doing the day-to-day stuff. Just a few things of the performance of the clinics. We had a total of 26 clinics here in New Kent County. Most, the majority of those were held at the high school, and there were a few held on other offsites. And our initial goal going into this with a population of about 23,500, we sat down and said, okay, if 30% of this doesn't receive the vaccination, and then another 30% factor of adults are only going to receive this at the time, we were looking at a goal of about 12,300, somewhere around there was our goal. As you see on the website today, there's about 10,000, almost 11,000 folks who have shots in arms in the county. So we came very darned close to that goal. We were originally going to roll that to July 31st, but we started shutting down early, which was a good thing. So last but not least, what I'd like to leave you with is the actual numbers that we put in arms. So again, 26 total clinics, this team that was assembled put a total of 8,526 shots in arms. That's a pretty big number, and that is a wonderful accomplishment by a lot of people. And a lot of people who, who had it in their heart to say this is the right thing to do. So again, from the bottom of my heart, you know, as the emergency management director, moving forward of trying to figure out a pandemic in a time of craziness, this was just a phenomenal effort by everyone in the county who came out to assist. So I applaud everyone who helped us with this endeavor, and I want to thank each and every one of those folks from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Any board members have any comments? Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Like Chief O'Pet said, and Rodney Hathaway said, is it took a team effort. And when I see some of these people sitting out here, I remember seeing you at a lot of the clinics, and you gave of your time, and we're so appreciative of it. And I must say that under the leadership of Chief O'Pet, I said to many people, I think he designed the drive-through at Chick-fil-A. Because the way this operated, when you came in, you registered, very, very limited time in line, waiting, getting registered, going on to the next stage, filling out your forms, and then going in, getting your shot. And just a great setup. And then when you see the Chickahominy Health District come in with visitors from other counties to see how we're doing our program, and they could go back and, you know, emulate what we're doing here and everything. But thanks to everybody who helped, but certainly the biggest salute goes to our fire chief, Rick O'Pet. Thank you, Rick.
Mr. Tiller?
Yeah, I wanted to thank everybody as well, and I know I came down here on a couple of Fridays, and every time I walked in, I wondered who was working over here in this building. Because it seemed like the admin office, everybody was there, and a lot of the fire and rescue and sheriff's department, and a lot of volunteers. It was really, it was like Mr. Steer said, it was like going through a line at Chick-fil-A. So again, I want to thank everybody too, and a little more warning on how sore your arm would be for about a week would have been a nice little heads up, but that's okay. We got through it. Thank you.
So just to repeat the sentiments of Mr. Hathaway and Chief O'Pet, and to say that one thing that was failed to mention is not only were, do we have over 10,000 people vaccinated, but we had a call center where we had volunteers that talked to everybody that was vaccinated. And trust me, sometimes you talk to the same person multiple times, but unlike, unlike the other vaccine sites where you call in and you do an email and you pray you get an email response, I am so absolutely proud that people were just so humble that they got a call back. And it was like, this is actually a person. And so, and that took many, many hours and tireless hours. And so I am just so proud of how, how this vaccine clinic was run. And another notch to say how proud I am to be a citizen of New Kent County.
Ms. Lockwood, you have a name?
Yeah, just, I know it sounds like an echo chamber in here, but y'all just did an amazing job. I mean.
He cried.
In this, did I cry? You weren't going to tell anybody. It was just an amazing job, you know. In this job that we do, usually when the phone rings and a citizen is calling, it's not always about praise. But I got more phone calls and text messages from folks that just said they had an incredible experience from the time they called into the call center until the time they were vaccinated. It was just a smooth streamlined process. So again, Chief O'Pet, thank you for coordinating that. And to everybody that volunteered, staff and volunteers as well, thank you for making New Kent shine.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Wonder, the first meeting we had was back in, when was the first meeting we had around that table? Just sitting up. I think it was January sometime. I think I just become chairman, I was with the, with the sheriff, the fire chief, Mr. Hathaway, superintendent of schools, there's six or seven of us here, thank Krista. And at that time, we were supposed to be working with the Hanover, Hanover County Board of Citizens to call Hanover County's and Chickahominy Health District hotline to get vaccinated. And we all sit around and said, we need to think outside the box. And they came up with this plan and said, we're going to own-call clinic. The Chickahominy Health District did not want us to do that. And Chief and Mr. Hathaway and the sheriff and myself, we fought back against that because we knew we had to do something for our citizens. And they ran with it. And I will have to appreciate all the work that sheriff, Mr. Hathaway, Krista, and all the volunteers. It was just an awesome, awesome community get-together to help the citizens of this county. So from the bottom of my heart as well, thank each and every one of you that helped. All right, Mr. Hathaway?
As a token of our, as a token of our appreciation, we do have a plaque for you. And I know there were a number of volunteers that were not able to make it today. We're still going to call their name, and we're going to make sure that they get their plaque. The plaque reads Volunteer Appreciation Award. We hereby express our sincerest appreciation to the volunteer in recognition of outstanding volunteer service during the New Kent County COVID-19 vaccination program. Thank you for your generosity and dedication presented by the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, June 2021. The first volunteer I'd like to call up is Catherine Chilly. She's not here. We'll make sure she gets this. Julie Escalona. All right. And I don't believe Kathy Hale is here, here. Oh, she is here. I didn't see you. I'm sorry. Patricia Townsend. And I know that Lee Quick could not make it. She sent me an email informing her, but we want to thank her for showing up at many of our vaccination events. Kelly Laduke. I saw Kelly, yes. This next one, you know, really, all big programs and projects require what I call spark plugs. Those people that are entrenched in it to really make things happen. And really, we had three spark plugs through our vaccination effort, one of which is Travis Jenkins. I don't believe he's here today, but we'll make sure that he gets his award. Jonathan Stanger. Teresa Alacorn. And Jason Baldwin. Stephen Woodward. I was hoping he would be here. I tell you, I believe he was at every single vaccination event. And I mean, just such a great spirit. Yes, we'll make sure he gets this. Josh Aragi. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. All right. Cody Gray. And Kelly, if you could accept his, yes. Also, another spark plug that was involved in the day-to-day and a great assistance to us, Holly Nagy. Barbara Britt. We'll make sure she gets this. And I don't believe Wilbur Collins is here too, but you know, Wilbur was one of our grounds guy. If you needed assistance getting from your car to the building, Wilbur was there to assist. Sarah Cochran. Steven Suddy. Okay, we'll make sure he gets it. Suzanne Grable. Glenn Palais. Dedrema Harai. Catherine Cranston. Another spark plug, definitely involved in the day-to-day, I mean, just every single aspect of it, from assisting with volunteers to being at events. Lisa Baber. Chief Baber. You know, the next person is probably one of our first volunteers, the first email we got requesting, if there were, asking if there were any opportunities to volunteer. And that's our county treasurer, Charles Evelyn. All right, and. Ms. Betty George, I thought I saw it. And our assistant county administrator, Justin Stotter. Sarah Story. Suzanne Yuzel. We'll make sure she gets that. Margaret Jefferson. Thank you. Monica Militrano. Cynthia McKinney, who's at the front desk. Thank you. Chris Brackett. Debbie McNear. I'm going to make sure he gets this, but we have a volunteer certificate plaque for our superintendent, Brian Nichols, that was also at every single vaccination event and jumping in, registering people, doing whatever was needed. So we're appreciative. Right. Matt Smolnick. Matt couldn't be here today. He's with a group of Boy Scouts in North Carolina, somewhere. Tisha Barth, I'm sorry. Okay, make sure she gets that. Stephanie Parrish, who's here. Thank you. Rebecca Wells, who I spoke to this morning, and we'll make sure she, she gets that. Kim Turner. Marshall Shelton.
The next one is Mr. Hathaway, but before we do that, any successful program is needed, for anything, successful programs needed, you need the support up top. And we obviously had it up top with the board, and then Rodney of my crazy ideas, or somebody else's crazy ideas, going to Rodney and say, hey, here's what I think. And he was always the first one to say, let's make it happen. Not only that, but he was out here. He was out in the trenches. He was registering people, doing whatever we need to do. As soon, as early as this week, we had one, and Mr. Hathaway was there. So Mr. Hathaway, thank you for, for everything done.
Wanda Watkins.
Thank you.
Gail Curry. I thought I saw Gail, yes. Gloria Johnson. All right. Now this, this next one, I think he showed up at our first vaccination event to look around, and he asked, is there anything I can do to help? So we put him to work, and that's Ron Steers. And not only that, he came back to additional vaccination events after that. So we thank you for that. Also, we want to recognize Mrs. Patricia Page, who not only came to vaccination events, also worked throughout, in the call center from the beginning, until we shut down the call center. And she's been instrumental, has been a blessing to us, another person that has just jumped in where we needed assistance at. So we thank you. And I saw Chief O'Pet sit his aside. We're not going to, we're not going to let him go without being recognized. Chief O'Pet, you know, definitely was a spark plug, as was said, you know, the design, the process, you know. I don't think we, I don't think we could not have done it better, actually. And definitely, we thank Chief O'Pet's leadership and the time and effort that he's put into this effort. I know he's put in a lot of hours, a lot of nights, a lot of weekends, and we thank you. Now, we have one more award, and you always say the best will last, but this person is definitely a true spark plug that, you know, we asked her to take on a task, and she just ran with it. and she just ran with it. And it's great to have people on your team like that, that can just run with things, and you don't have to worry about it because you know it's going to get done. And it's going to get done right. We want to recognize Krista Yudzie.
And I did fail to mention this on purpose about the call center, because I remember sitting at the table, and there were a few of us, Krista was there, and as Mr. Evelyn stated, that we didn't want to do it another way, we wanted to do it our way, because we truly understood our population, their constituents, our population of what was needed. And our goal was, we needed to talk to every human with another human. And I remember looking at Krista and said, you got this, this is yours. Now, it didn't come with many tears, with many, what, what would you say, screaming, whatever else that went with it. But at the end of the day, it was about the high quality that went into the performance of that call center, from everyone in there, and especially Krista, who managed that day-to-day. Thanks so much, that was, you rocked that, thanks.
Now, we also wanted to do something special for Krista too, with the gift. And we wanted a gift that she could truly use too. And next week, Krista is going on a well-deserved vacation. So, we wanted her to have something to take with her on that vacation.
Krista, I have something in the back of the truck, I couldn't bring you here to put in that.
All right, again, I just want to thank everyone for your dedication. A lot of our volunteers just jumped in and weren't even asked. And, you know, there was a point where I started assigning departments to the call center. And, you know, I was kind of worried about the blowback I was going to get. But, you know, I got so many comments from those departments that worked that call center, thanking me for giving them the opportunity to serve New Kent County citizens. And that's the type of staff we have, and staff I'm proud to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Let's take a five-minute break.
We do donations at the fair.
I don't know.
I know she doesn't.
All right, get back to the agenda. Next item on the agenda is New Kent County Fair Association Funding Request. Fair Chairman, Ms. Martin. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Martha Martin and I know most of you. And I am the Chairman of the New Kent County Fair Association. For almost fifty years, we have put on a fair. Except for, we didn't do one last year, along with, you know, we had other things to do. But, a couple of weeks ago, we sat in here and we decided we would go ahead with the fair. It'll be an abbreviated kind of situation. It won't be held until October. Because it takes us a while to put it all together. And we didn't want to do anything if COVID was still hanging around over top of our heads. Anyway, so, we do, I'm here today to ask for additional funding. I had written you a letter. I told you that one of the biggest problems, well, one of the biggest expenses we have is insurance. We carry a year-round policy which protects us when we meet, plus little other things that we do here and there. But it also, we have a second policy that is called an event policy, and that protects us at the actual event. The New Kent County, as well as New Kent County Schools, are covered by that policy as well. Maybe that's why it's expensive. I don't know. But, anyway. So, that's it. We enjoy bringing a fun day to the people of New Kent. Anyone who wants to can participate. They can come to the fair. They're welcome to help us put it together. But basically, we have a committee of about fifteen people with additional volunteers during that day. So, that's what I'm doing. That's it. Thomas?
Any questions? Ms. Steers?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Martin, you said you have two different insurance policies. One for the annual policy that covers when you have meetings?
It covers anything that we do during the year. We do some fundraisers during the year. And we do, we have meetings during the year, and we usually meet here, and so that policy covers our meetings here. Quite often, we do the pageant at a different time than the fair, and so that would cover that as well. We come to National Night Out, Grand Illumination, and that covers us all there, too.
Okay. This year, you're having a one-day event.
Yes.
So, that's a separate policy. And in the past, you said it's been about $2,000, but that was for a three-day event. So...
Right, right. Yes, I know that. I'm hoping my, all right, the year-round insurance went down $100, because I just renewed that. I didn't carry it last year. But I can't get the, I won't know the amount of the event, because what they do is they look at what we're doing. So, if we have things that they consider more dangerous than others, then the premium will go up.
Right. And you said that you're still in the planning stages, which I can appreciate that. And you mentioned the things, the garden exhibits, vendors, food, raffles, petting zoo, local entertainment, and a parade. There's nothing mentioned about rides. Are you planning on having rides this year?
Did I leave that out?
Well, I mean, that's a big cost of the insurance.
That's a big cost. And again, that, it's going to depend on what kind of money we have before we even contact ridespeople. But we are looking at different rides companies. There's one out of Petersburg that seems a little more reasonable. But you, you get the rides according to, you can have like ten things, and it'll cost you X number of dollars. But then you could get five things, and it would be, you know, considerably less. So, what we'll do is when we'll sit down and we figure out what we need to spend money on, and then we will decide how much our rides are. We are, we have decided already that the entertainment, the, sometimes we have paid for outside entertainment to come in, musical entertainment. I don't think we're going to do that this year. We're going to hit up the churches and other local people who can provide that entertainment for us more. And for, you know, contribution.
Right. Well, I would imagine that, with you cutting the event from three days to one day, it's probably going to cut that policy in half, at least.
No, because it was, it was, it was really two days. It was a half a day on Friday, all day Saturday, and half a day Sunday. So, it's really just two days that we paid for. It would be nice if they cut it in half.
Well, the reason I say that is because we just had the prom at Rockahawk, and we used the same insurance company. And the price they quoted us for a one-day event with a very dangerous hazardous railroad involved was way less than the $2,000. So, I would say, go back to your insurance guy and talk to him and see if you can get a better rate.
We will. But we, what, I have to show them what we are doing. For instance, I've got to show them we're going to have a hayride if somebody gets away. I have to show them that we're going to have, I don't know, whatever else we do, pony rides or something, all of that stuff. But that, the insurance that we have to cover, and we have to cover it because you all say that I have to have insurance.
Oh, yeah.
And it's a good idea. I'm not saying that. But every one of my vendors, not the people who sell things, but those people who do things for us, they also have insurance that covers you and covers the school board.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, when I think of the fair, and I think about, not last year, but year before last, when, when I, when I happen upon social media pages with over 116 comments about vendors that were at the fair, it would be my desire that at the fair this year, that we would be very sensitive, or you all would be very sensitive as to the vendors that will be attending. I think that here at New Kent, we are New Kent Strong, we are one community. And so, if there are vendors that offend anyone, especially when, and it is not just the community of color, but when we have ladies that say that they don't want, they didn't want their children to see or witness a particular vendor that was there, then that goes beyond the realm of a group of people that are concerned. And so, I would, it would be my desire that out of the list of vendors, that vendors that would be offensive, especially during this time of the nation and the Commonwealth's sensitivity, that they would be eliminated. I need to realize that everybody has freedom of speech, everybody has the right to represent their heritage. However, we are United County, and when I, I get texts and phone calls, and I read social media, and people are upset about an event that this county is supporting, then I think that the Civil War and the Revolutionary War and everything else has a place. But I don't think that the county fair has a place for it. And so, I would ask that you and your committee, please take that into consideration when you are getting your list of vendors together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have already done that. We have already discussed that, and those who are offensive, we have not invited back.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman? I move to appropriate $5,000 from the fund balance to the New Kent County Fair Association.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Any discussion? Non-Miss Watkins Poll, the members, please.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you. And I hope you all come on out on October the ninth.
October ninth?
October the ninth, 10 to 6. Yep.
Next item is Bridges of Change Program Update. Director of the program, Karen Morrison?
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you very much for having us this morning. I am the county's Victim Witness Assistance Program Director, but I'm also the Chair of the Board for Bridges of Change. And I wanted to update you on what was going on with Bridges of Change. I did give a handout with some brightly colored circles on it. When Bridges of Change opened in 2018, our grant that year was over $200,000. The following year, the grant was the same, over $200,000. We had to match that grant at 25%, so for both years, we had to come up with over $40,000 ourselves, which we were able to do. Normally, you can hear me without that. This year, we were notified in January that the funding would not look the same. And on May the 13th, we received a letter showing that we would receive 65% in cuts. Yesterday, I received a certified statement of grant award showing that for two years, for the next two years, we will receive $141,000. 25% of that is a match, which is 28,251. So, basically, without our match, we are going to have to run a 10-bed shelter on $56,502. Our staff have left us. They understood that when we start again on Jan, July 1, tomorrow, that we would not have the same amount of staff that we've had, which was a shelter manager full-time and four part-time staff members. We will be able to afford two part-time staff members, which, as you can probably imagine, doesn't cover the amount of time that we need to be in the shelter with our clients. Over the years, we have contacted our counties that we cover. We cover New Kent, Charles City, West Point, King and Queen, and King William for funding. And this is what this, the pie chart is about. I wanted to show you the population amounts covered by the shelter, with New Kent being the largest. The funding, the very first year that we got, we were given extra funding by King and Queen and Charles City, who both donated $5,000 each to us. In the next funding cycle of FY '22, West Point and King, sorry, West Point and Charles City have given us $5,000 each in their budgets, and King and Queen is giving us $3,500. I wanted to let you know what our clients look like, where do they come from, which is what you've seen below, the amount of children that they have, and the amount of nights that they have. Normalized amount of time in the shelter is 30 days. If we had extra time and our clients didn't have anywhere to go, they were allowed that extra time. And so, you can see, there are some New Kent clients there, some Charles City. Because we're grant-funded, we have to produce statistics showing that we're using our money wisely. And that's why we allowed domestic violence victims from other counties to come and stay with us. We had the space. And it's not really a statistic thing, but these ladies needed assistance and help, their children needed space. And so, while New Kent's numbers are not over the top high, we do have New Kent clients in there. None at the moment, but we have had New Kent clients that we've worked with over the, over the years. So, that's where I am with that. We are in a dire situation. Our Board of Directors, and Suzanne is our secretary. We're not giving up. We fought hard for years now to get where we needed to, because the need for domestic violence is so great. COVID showed us last year exactly what it was like to stay in a house with an abuser the whole time, and our numbers shot through the roof. And I know that because of Victim Witness, the daytime paid job that I do, our numbers, we see almost new victims of domestic violence every day. So, those, those statistics are huge. And our Victim Witness program works for New Kent and Charles City, but the majority of clients come from New Kent.
You said the majority of clients come from New Kent?
For your Victim Witness program, yes.
Oh, victims. Oh, I thought you were talking about.
No, no, sorry. Victim Witness here, of course. Our numbers are very high.
Do you get any funding? I mean, it looks like, what I'm figuring here is about 7% is what New Kent is using, you bid in 836 bed nights. New Kent's had 59 of them, so that's roughly 7%.
Yeah.
Looks like the majority of it's Petersburg, Richmond, and St., do you get any kind of, have you asked them for any type of funding, or?
We can't do that, because they come from other shelters. They're also grant-funded, so no, we don't get any funding from them. And we're not supposed to charge for our services. That's part of the grant. I want to point out that the way that the Department of Criminal Justice Services split this fund was there were competitive funders, which, or competitive grantors, which are us. And then there was core services, so those were, those were shelters that have been open or offering services for a lot longer than three years. They were all fully funded. So, all of these people on our sheet here, from Richmond, from Petersburg, the majority of those shelters were fully funded. So, I'm going to be changing things that we only accept our clients, because we're so low on funds right now.
Did you say you're only going to be accepting clients from your coverage area? So, people from Richmond won't be coming to your shelter? Is that what you're saying?
Unless they are in a dire situation where we have to hide someone, and we have had that kind of situation. Because no one knows where our shelter is, we can hide people who are in a dire crisis from another county.
I'm surprised that you don't get funding from these other areas, because it seems like the overwhelming number of people that are using your services are outside your service area. I'm surprised that you're not getting more funding from those municipalities. Do they have their own shelters?
Yeah.
So, you're kind of catching their overflow? Is that sort of what we're talking about?
Yes. It comes down to the sheer numbers of domestic violence that have increased, and people, the Richmond shelters were always full. I mean, this was the whole reason that we opened up our shelter, was because our clients didn't have anywhere to go. We would call Williamsburg and be turned down. We would call Richmond and be turned down, just because they didn't have the space.
So, this shelter is a combination of New Kent, Charles City, King William, King and Queen, and West Point?
Yes, sir.
What's the funding that each of those localities have kicked in? Have you asked other localities?
Charles City has kicked in $5,000 for last year, plus next year, they've got us in their budget. King and Queen have funded us for both years. West Point, this will be the first year that West Point funds us. King William has not.
How much is West Point, $5,000?
$5,000, and then $3,500 from King and Queen.
And I guess this funding request missed the deadline to get into the budget process, or?
We, until January, we didn't realize we were going to have a problem. Which was when they sent out that first letter. And actually, the first letter said, "You're going to be cut, we just don't know how much." And then, when I got the letter yesterday, we have known for a while how it was the 65%.
Any other board members have any comments? Maybe we should look into this a little closer at our next meeting, work session, get some more information.
I agree.
May I ask a question? What kind of information would you like to see?
Probably a little bit more breakdown of the finance of what you're talking, like the letters and all the information you're getting, percentage of your cut, just the numbers of it, you know, all the breakdown.
Okay, thank you.
And what you're planning on, how you're planning on operating it, getting the other people out, what you're planning to, you know, make it more for the, for the, for the, for the localities that you're providing.
We would have a better idea as well by your next meeting about what it's going to look like, considering that the new grant starts tomorrow.
Okay.
And if I may, just, I'm just curious. Did you also say that you're not allowed to ask those other municipalities for funding?
No. And some clients from the other municipalities may just call us and ask us if they can come, so they don't actually come from anywhere. I think one of our very first clients was sleeping in her car with her children in Richmond, and her car didn't work. And so, rather than have children of a domestic violence situation sleeping in a car, we accepted them. So, there would be, I'm sorry, Mr. Lockwood, there would be no, no funding source to ask her for funds.
Just looking at the last year, it's, there's only been, only three clients from your, your, your coverage area that were served in the last year. Everything else came from some other place, and, and the length of stay is extensive for those, so...
I'm, I'm very conscious, because I work with domestic violence victims here in New Kent, that many of them do not need to go into a shelter. They have family support. We're a small community. They can find support from families or friends, or a lot of people just don't want to come into a shelter. They have this viewpoint of what it looks like. And it's not perfect. You share a room with another mother. You might have different parenting skills. The children's friends aren't there. They're sleeping in bunk beds. So, it's a whole different experience. And we have some really good responses here in New Kent from the professionals who work with domestic violence. So, I'm not shocked by the numbers, because I know where our victims are going.
Well, you're doing good work, and, you know, regardless of where they come from, these women need assistance. So, it's, it's an honorable thing that you're doing, so, thank you.
You'll notice there are some gentlemen in there as well. Due to our sleeping arrangements, we put them up in hotels.
When you're full, do these other shelters that are sending clients to you, do they accept our clients?
They don't. Everyone is truly full. Truly full. We end up, if we don't have space, we pay for clients to stay in hotels, which are usually up in the Sandston or the Williamsburg area, because we, we don't have that resource here. And then, we'll work with social services to try and get them funding to stay longer than what we can afford. And then, with Thrive as well, try and get some funding sources.
So, Ms. Chairman, so, am I understanding correctly, if somebody from Richmond is sent here and we don't have the space, then we pay for them to stay in a motel?
No, no.
I mean, that's...
If they're sent from Richmond, oh, sorry, first of all, we wouldn't take them, and then it's up to Richmond to find them a hotel in the Richmond area.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we don't do that.
Sheriff? Sheriff, if you have something?
Yes, sir, if I may. And I'd ask Ms. Morrison to correct me if I'm wrong. I'm not an official member of the board, but I am an advisory member. And there are a number of power victims in domestic violence in New Kent and Charles City that go to other locations to stay with relatives, because they're trying to put distance between themselves and that abuser. So, they're not physically staying here in New Kent. However, they are using some of the services that are provided by this group. In addition, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, there was a letter authored once the determination was made as to the grant cut, that went to our congressional representatives, our General Assembly representatives, other agencies, to include Department of Criminal Justice Services and the Homeland Security and Public Safety Director, asking that this process be re-examined, because the more affluent, the more financially stable shelters were fully funded, where ours in the more rural areas, and we were not the only one, rural and new type of facilities were not funded. The one he went, unfortunately, as usual, to the, the larger, more financially capable jurisdictions. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just want to, I want to know, when, when this comes back, as we do research, it becomes, what is the plan with the funding amount that has been dedicated? I mean, you're saying you're getting about $141,000. You were getting $200,000. With the commitments, you have probably about $15,000, so you're going to be short. So, it becomes, what is the, I don't know what the ask is, and I don't know what the plan is if you don't get it. And that's what I'm interested in seeing. Thank you.
Absolutely. We have, of course, budgeted for the amounts that they gave us, which comes to about $76,000 a year with the $14,000 that we have to match. So, it's $56,000 that they've given us. We've budgeted that. We've budgeted the staff, including any donation cash that we get. So, I will, I will bring you the new budget. Thank you.
All right. There's no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Both for coming.
Thank you.
Next item, Vision New Kent County Strategic Plan. Aaron Arnett?
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board. I appreciate you all having me here. What I'd like to do is go over the final plan document. You all saw the draft plan the last time I was here. I want to review most of it, just review. We're not going to go over in detail like we did last time. I'm going to go over the framework of the plan and what's in the report, and then talk a little bit about some first step implementation tasks that I think you all should, should follow, and then open it up to questions after that. Why do I always have this problem? There we go. We're good. I remember last time. I don't know what it is. So, just a reminder that from the beginning of this process, this has been intended to be a bridge to the comprehensive plan. It's intended to be a foundation to the comprehensive plan. And that's, that's important, because from the beginning, this was really tasked to be a hybrid strategic plan of sorts. So, it's got your typical strategic plan elements like a broad-based vision, goals, and specific strategies that go along with it. But it also has that planning focus. Again, thinking about that next, thinking about comprehensive plan. And so, that's the development vision itself. That's the market research and the economic development piece of the plan. That's also market positioning and branding as well. So, it's important, I think, to keep in mind that, that hybrid element of this plan, because, again, it is that foundation for you all to go through a comprehensive planning process. Because, again, it is that foundation for you all to go through a comprehensive planning process. This slide is my, my favorite slide of all. Um, y'all have seen bits and pieces of this before. But with our community input here, um, we, we, obviously, this whole thing started or happened during COVID. In fact, our kickoff happened just before COVID started. And actually, hearing everything that was going on earlier today and thinking about how this process evolved over time. Yeah, it, it, it was a, it was a process that extended because of COVID. But, um, the byproduct of us thinking creatively and working with the staff and working with the steering committee. That was, what was open to thinking creatively is we had a tremendous amount of, of public input throughout this process. A tremendous amount. And I think a testament to that is if you look at our initial kickoff that we had. There were sixty people in the room. That's good for, for a rural county this size. That's a good number of people, and it's a great discussion. But then when we look at the, um, the draft plan workshop that we had at the very end of this, uh, to get the final input. There was a hundred and thirty people that participated in that, and that was something that we worked with staff. To do an, a, a hybrid draft plan workshop where it was both in-person as well as virtual. And all told, there were close to six thousand public engagements that we had over the course of this planning process. And, um, it, again, this is just a tremendous amount of input. We feel very pleased. We talked about it last time, we know that there was challenges along the way, there continues to be challenges with reaching, um, all the, the parts of, of this rural county. But we couldn't be more pleased about the sheer numbers of people who were engaged in the process. One of the most important numbers is you see up there at the top, the smallest number of all is twelve. You all, um, before you even hired us, um, you, you all appointed a committee to help guide us through this plan. And several of those members are in the room right now, if you wanna raise your hand. I wanna personally thank you all for your help in this process. You'll hear me say it again, this plan isn't our plan, this plan is your plan, this plan is the community plan. But this group in particular, um, was incredibly knowledgeable and helpful throughout the entire process. More importantly, they were very energetic. Um, we had, I can't tell you how many committee meetings that we had. Part of the reason why we were able to have so many is because we were forced to have them virtually. But that really helped mo- mold this plan into what we have today. So again, personally, I wanna thank the steering committee and your guidance for appointing such a qualified steering committee. And helping us develop this plan, um, because, because I feel strongly that it's a great final product, given all this input. So now, just wanna refresh your memory on the elements of the plan itself. The vision is just the second chapter, there's a lot that builds up to that vision, we wanted to put it first and foremost in the plan itself. The first draft, the committee worked, um, with us and the input from the community that was building up to this point. To draft this vision statement. And then with your help from the last time I met with you all and your great input, as well as the draft plan workshop with the community. We, we, we evolved it a little bit further. So the, the final, um, vision statement you see up here is, New Kent County will remain a diverse community. The values is outstanding rural character, history, natural environment, and quiet community lifestyle. We will maintain these values through thoughtful planning and managed economic development, with continued responsive and accountable governance supportive of our residents. So that's the vision statement, you know, that's really the foundation of this plan. But also you see up there, there are five themes that are, are part of the plan. And those core themes are the priorities given to us by the community through this process. Um, and they really laid the framework for the overall plan. So really, the elements of the plan, strategies, goals, implementation is all built on those five strategies of, um, excuse me. Core themes of infrastructure, growth management, quality of life, governance, and resiliency. And it's interesting too, you know, resiliency became something, I mentioned this y'all, to you all last time, that emerged throughout the process. And, um, it's not something that we always see in the plans that we do. But of course, it was very topical because of COVID nineteen and dealing with that. And again, I think the, the, the first, um, the first thing on, item on the agenda today is a testament to why that's so important. To thinking about twenty years into the future and beyond. So next was strategic assessment, again, I'm not gonna go into this, but this is the second chapter. It deals with all of the public input, it goes over the, um, the community surveys that we did. Ends in a SWOT analysis. But the, the most important here, thing here is this framed the conversation throughout the entire process. Is this early input, this early analysis we have in the community. Next was the market analysis, I mentioned, there's a little bit more of a planning focus to, to this than.
Can I go back to that SWOT analysis?
Yes.
Do you have page eleven? I think we talked about this last time.
I do have page eleven, thank you.
I think, uh, on the weaknesses, we talked about this last time. There's, there's appears to be a lack of communication, infrastructure between decision-making makers and citizenry. Which has created distrust in government agencies. I asked for, I think I asked for some more information on that. I mean, anytime something comes up, we've had community meetings. I mean, uh, we had the whole high school pact when the casino came. And we don't have that many people come to our meetings. Uh, so I need, I'd like to have some more information on that if there's a.
Here is the reality of that, that point. I, and I, um, yeah, I mentioned first, there were nearly six thousand people that were engaged in this process. I would venture to say that there's, maybe there has, but there've been few public processes that you all have engaged in in the past. Where there were close to six thousand people that were involved in the process. That was something that was given your size of a, of a rural community, that was a bit of a surprise to me to see that level. Of that sheer number of people that were involved, that says something. That tells me that you all are doing something right. By the same token, it was coming up in conversation, it was coming up in that's, the SWOT analysis and particularly that strategic assessment. Is probably eighty percent what we were, we're hearing, and about twenty percent of what we were seeing was some of the analysis. Um, and a lot of that was what we were hearing from people. That communication and distrust, um, in my opinion, and, and the committee members in the room and staff certainly. Who are incredibly helpful as well, can correct me, um, on this. I think it had to do with, um, a few timely, uh. You know, conversations that you all, as, as a county and the board, were having at the time about some development. At the time when we started this thing, as well as some gaps of, you know, some of the, the, the. The, um, residents of the county that are always a challenge to connect with. I think those two things are the reason why that became a point in the strategic plan and, in, in the, um, public input that we were receiving. We did even have some of those comments in the final draft review. So, it's a great question, I'll qualify it with, you know, I feel like there's been strong community outreach. And, and connections to the community here. And the other thing is too, which I think is, uh, important, and we talked about this the last time as well. One of the, the, the strategies of this plan was to look at the county, um, uh, hiring a public information officer. And I know that's something that y'all are, are working on. In fact, I don't know if that's been done yet, but I know.
That's been approved.
There you go. That, that's a tool.
Distrust, distrust is a strong word. I don't like it. And, I mean, I'm trying to speak for the rest of the board. I mean, if we had that one issue down there in, uh, the, uh, what, eastern part of the county, you probably had a lot of input on that. But that never even came to the board supervisor to vote on. And you wanna, I've been on board for, I don't know, fifteen years now. You know how many people have come up for public comment on our budget process? To me, that's the most important thing we do. We've kept our tax rate down, when people call us, we respond, we're out in the community. To say distrust? I don't like it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Edelman. When I read that, I thought, what a slap in the face. I don't think there's a single member on this board that doesn't reach out to our constituents. Anytime, excuse me, there's any major project going on that would concern the citizens, we have town hall meetings. All of us have town hall meetings occasionally. When we have the budget hearing, we have, uh, public comment period for people to come and speak at the budget. And out of twenty-three thousand people in April, three people came to speak about the budget, three. But that's a, like Ms. Edelman said, that is a strong word, and I take offense to it. And, and while we're on that subject, uh, broadband infrastructure, we're working feverishly right now, trying to get broadband brought in. So you scratch that off your list. Although New Kent County has great visitor assets, it has convent, no, no conventional overnight accommodation and lack of support services. We reached, I, I personally have reached out to the EDA to reach out to different hotel chains to come to New Kent County. We have four exits, all of them are available for a hotel, and they have done their due diligence. And last year in Williamsburg, the hotel occupancy was forty percent. So hotels aren't looking to expand right now, especially last year suffered through COVID. So it's not like we haven't reached out. You can't force the Hilton to come and build here. I've, I've spoken to Colonial Downs, they have enough property out there for a hotel. And I think probably in the next couple of years, you'll see a hotel go in somewhere on that property out there. There, the hotels that they have reached out to said that they are waiting to, for some history. To make sure Colonial Downs is gonna exist before they go and invest a hundred million dollars in a building. So it's not like, we're not doing stuff. Fifty-five and older, we have plenty of, of subdivisions for fifty-five and older. We have a new hospital in New Kent County, that's a medical office. We have healthcare services, and I imagine that, that the, uh, hospital will attract more medical services. And, I mean, I, 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 I'm just, you, you know where I'm coming from.
I don't like the distrust statement either, but this information was collected from a survey. Where over twelve hundred people in our county participated in. So there is a misconception, that is a misconception that I think we have to deal with, even though we don't like it and we do think that we are. You know, we, we're doing a lot more than what our citizens see, obviously, see that we're doing. This is something that, that we have to work towards, um, and I don't think it's something we can ignore. Because this was a common theme that came back from the surveys with over twelve hundred participants in the county, which is a high response for that, that type of survey.
What's the percentage? We've never seen it. Has anybody seen the survey?
Can I, can I jump in for a minute? No, I, I just, I, I can understand y'all taking offense to, you know, the word. Y'all, I don't take offense to it. It doesn't bother me because, you know, when, when I look at, you know, this is a statement of our strengths, our weaknesses. Our opportunities and our threats. And regardless of who said it or how many said it, there were at least enough respondents to express that. You don't have to agree with what they express, but that was their interpretation of how we govern and how we communicate. So I think maybe instead of being challenged by that word, we should take it to the third word of the SWOT. Which is the opportunity. And we have made improvements over, you gotta remember, this was a year and a half ago we started this process. This was over a year ago that this survey was taken. So, you know, the remnants of that. Combat range issue were still strong. So, it, it would be interesting to see if that feeling is, is the same now and if at the same level. So I think maybe we should just look at it as an opportunity, as a board, as, as a county. To address that issue that some people feel, I think we already have, we're going to have a commu- a communication person. Whose job will be getting the word out to people. Um, we can't force people to listen. Okay, we, we, we advertise, we, you see how many people show up for a meeting. This was incredible, it's a work session. So, you know, I, I would, I would view it as an opportunity, y'all. I, I wouldn't take offense to it, I don't think it is, is aimed at anybody personally. But I think that, you know, we need to take a look at this as an opportunity for us to improve. The, the view that our, our constituents and residents have of government in general. You gotta remember, sometimes when they're doing these surveys, they, they don't separate us from Congress. There's a underlying sentiment that they may not trust government in general. So I, I would say, let's not take it too personally and, and, and let's not. See it as anything more than an opportunity to improve the impression that the folks in New Kent have. That's, that's my only, my only statement, thank you.
I understand, I get it, cuz we did talk about that last time. We, in fact, that's one of the major changes we made to the vision statement, if you recall, is giving you all, credit's not the right word. But giving you all the county, um, the, uh, the recognition that you are working hard for the residents of this community. That was one of the major, if not the main, um, edit that was made to the vision statement. In fact, there was a little bit, there were some comments of the, from the draft plan workshop about, well, we don't do some of these things that are in this plan. Just, yeah, well, that's, that's right, that's why it's a strategic plan, that's why it's a twenty-year plan. But I think there are a couple of things that were brought up here real quick is, um, Rodney mentioned the, the term misconception. I personally feel that's what the word is. Now, to the people that made the comment, it's not a misconception to them, they feel that. But I think the whole, it is a, 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 a misconception. The fact that you all are putting together the tools to, um, expand that communication with the public information officer. That's, that's that opportunity, and I think y'all are hitting that nail right on the head. I think while it's recognized and here that those comments were made, um, you know, I think the, I think that the fact that you all are already. Even, you know, as the ink is still drying on this, this document, are doing, um, things to address some of the challenges that y'all have had. Says a lot. In fact, broadband, I mean, wow, look at what y'all have done in the last year with that. Yes, it was mentioned as a weakness here. One of the things I was gonna mention later is that's, that's the task that is going to probably be one of the first ones that you check off the list. So rather than remove it from the list, let's leave it there, because then we can say, you know what, this is what we've done, we heard you in the community. We've seen the challenges that we've had, COVID perhaps exposed some of the things, challenges we had with, um, broadband. But we are hitting that head on, and that'll be the first thing that we will tick off the list. And I think the final thing that I'll say about that is, um, thinking about some of the misconceptions that we were hearing. As being perhaps, um, an opportunity. That's a data point, that is a data point early in this process. That helped us, um, you know, sort of build a foundation for the rest of the plan. One of the big, uh, recommendations of this that, that, um, that we feel that, that you all should pursue. Is do community satisfaction surveys after the fact. So here it is, a year, year and a half later since, that we really got rolling with this plan. Let's poll the community now, the folks that were saying, you know, we had, we, we, um, had some challenges. With this particular, uh, development proposal that was happening eighteen months ago. Or a year ago, six months ago, we're having all these challenges with broadband. I would venture to say that if we were asking those questions today, that people might have a different perception. And that's because you all are doing, um, doing the right things. And, and not only that, I will say this too. This plan, again, this document is a result of a, a lot of work and a lot of time. But you all as a county have been listening throughout this process and these conversations, and you all have been. hitting the buttons before, you know, we were ever even able to put them into the report. And I don't want to remove those like broadband, Public Information Officer. I don't want to remove those.
But the distrust, you still haven't told me where the distrust is. I don't want to know.
I feel that it has.
I mean, give me some examples. We can't fix anything that I don't know what the distrust is. In terms of issue, every one of us had, uh, community meetings, channels, we had, uh, at the visitor, I had standing room only. It wasn't a big issue. Each one of us have community meetings, town halls. So I need to know what the distrust is. You, you need, I mean, we paid you till I want to know.
I, I feel that that stems from a couple of things. I feel like it stems from the timeline of when this was done. The mention of the combat range was really fresh on people's mind when that was, when this survey was initially done. At the beginning of this process. I also think it has to do with even though we had nearly six thousand, um, public engagements during this process. We know because we tracked some of it during this process, that there's gaps in the community that deal with, with those who were engaged, that deal directly with demographics. It deals directly with socioeconomics. It deals directly with, um, ge- geography of the county, which is interesting because from east to west of the county, if you look at those six thousand people that were engaged, it probably pulls more center west than it does to the more rural parts of the county.
Uh, just move on. You're not telling me anything.
I apologize. Okay. All right. We'll move on. Um, we talked about market analysis and how that really was a, a, a planning component that, uh, really laid the foundation for the business strategy and also the opportunities from an investment standpoint that we need here in the community. Um, a couple of things I'll mention here real briefly is that you all between twenty-ten and, uh, twenty-twenty, the last ten years grew by nearly thirty percent, twenty, twenty-five point eight percent. That's insane. That's an insane amount of growth that we don't typically see. But even though you are one of the fastest growing counties in, in the entire state of Virginia, you're still only twenty-three thousand people. You're still a rural community. And I was reminded of that as I was driving through today. Um, and, and part of this, this is both a challenge and I think something that represents who we are is you rely on the outside for certain things, whether it be jobs. You have a lot of commuters that, that leave this county, but also businesses as well. And, um, we'll talk a little bit more about that here i- in a few minutes. Another thing that's really planning focused is design character and the character boards that were part of this planning process. This, for all intents and purposes, represents a development vision, um, for the plan. And, um, the, the, the question here goes back to my previous slide about, we know we're growing. How do we grow but still protect and retain what we have and what's, it makes us special? And that's that rural character that we have here. These design strategy boards, um, this is really that main bridge to the next step, the comprehensive planning process. Because it's all about development types and how we manage that growth. It's that foundation of both the comp plan and future revisions to our development tools. But in that, you'll recall there are eight, um, development types that are discussed. Design principles and overall character that could occur that we might want to include these, these discussion and these findings in the comp planning process and, and, and updates to those development tools. That's village, hamlet, crossroads development, countryside, business parks, interstate interchanges, residential development. And then one thing that I think is really important, the eighth is, uh, New Kent County Courthouse. This area being the center of the county and really where all things come together and what it should become. Next was the, uh, brand expansion. Um, this has everything to do with visioning and economic development, tourism development, but also communication. Communication to people that we want to come and invest here, but communication to people that, that live here. Um, early on in the process, we, we learned that what you had was working for you all. Um, and rather than recreate the entire thing, we focused on building on the existing system that you have here. Because it's a great system. It really is. So what we did with this particular one is, um, we, we, we focused on updating the tools to be a little bit more current in their design. But real, I mean, you look up there and you can see it pretty much looks very similar to, to what you have been work, working on. We made sure that, you know, from some of the strategies and the, the, the market positioning that we incorporated that vision. But I think the most important thing is we focused on maximizing the expandability of your marketing tools, your communication tools. And you can see that with, you know, independent logos that can help highlight, um, some of the communities that you have, the distinct communities and places that you have, as well as, um, enhanced marketing tools, um, to help promote the county as a place to live, work and invest. And then really the, the bulk of the plan is that chapter, I think, seven, which is goals and strategies. There's a lot of detail to it. In fact, you can't see all these words on the slide. That's okay. This is the meat of the plan. There's the single vision statement we talked about. We talked about the five strategic themes. Within those themes, there's twenty-one total goals and there's a hundred and thirteen strategies in that. That's a lot. This is a big plan. This is a bold plan. This is probably much bigger, um, in terms of content than the strategic plans that you're used to. And again, that goes from the fact that there's that planning focus to, to it. Um, so there's a lot to, to, to unpack in this plan. Um, all of that happens in that strategy board that goes over the goals, the strategies, um, the, the priorities of each one of those strategies, the partners. One of the things you'll hear me say, uh, towards the end is this is a county plan, but it's really a community plan. Y'all can't do this on your own. Y'all have got to rely on your partner agencies and the public to help you implement this long-range, broad-based plan over time. There's benchmarks on when these things will start or when they'll end. There's implementation, uh, detail in each one of these tasks on the strategy board. And ultimately there's those potential performance, um, indicators that we can use to track the process of this over time. One of which would be a, uh, customer satisfaction survey that we're talking about before. Um, there's a lot in this that is in, uh, the detail of the plan. Um, but of course, I'm not here to go over a hundred and thirteen strategies with you today. Because, um, we, it would take all day. We did discuss ten key strategies the last time that we were here. Again, in interest of time, I won't go into those in detail, um, because we did discuss those. But we did in the, the draft plan review process, um, we, we did, uh, have the public comment on those and help us rank those and, 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 and in the edits to the final plan. Um, we, we sort of, uh, restructured the priorities based on what the committee and the public were seeing as far as those, uh, key strategies happen to be. But these, these ten key strategies, um, really are, they're not the most important, but they're some of the priorities, I would say, that the, the community, um, mentioned. And you can see them up here, developing plan, uh, and to provide enhanced internet. That's, let's check that one off the list. Success. We're working on that. That was the thing that was mentioned firsthand that went up in the first public meeting. That's the first thing that y'all have been addressing all throughout this plan. Crew businesses based on the potential identified in the strategic plan. We talked about that last time. We're seeing a lot of opportunity and demand for new business and investment in the community. But the big question here is, well, what's right for our community? You know, there might be demand for, you know, a, a, a general merchandising like Walmart, but do we want that here? Um, and if we don't want that here, if that doesn't fit, um, what, who we are as a place, then we need to re, we need to structure our recruitment based on that. Update the comprehensive plan. That's the first step. That's the critical first step. Um, adopt that, the, the character boards, that's that divi- design vision. That will, um, be the foundation, I think, of that comprehensive planning process when you get into it. Improve community participation. Again, you all have hired a public information officer. Next thing that we are going to be able to check off the list right there, right out of the gate. Um, enhance entryways, revise the zoning code, uh, adopt a disaster recovery plan across all departments. That was something, um, that really emerged early on and I think it was because of what we were dealing with with COVID. And I think, again, the, the, the first item on the agenda today was a testament to that is there are these things that we didn't imagine a year and a half ago that we'd have to deal with. And look at how well that y'all have dealt with that. And, and this is just thinking about it across the board, not just with, um, public safety, but also with the services that we had challenges providing to, uh, whether social services, whether park and recreation that we had challenges providing because of, um, the cards that we were all dealt during COVID. Let's think about that moving forward with disaster recovery. And the last two really get back into implementation. Um, align this plan with, or excuse me, align, uh, the str- uh, departmental strategic plans with this plan. We've developed a template for you all to do that. Some of your, uh, uh, departments were already doing that. Ran across the board for something super simple to something extremely detailed. Um, we feel like it needs to fall somewhere in between, but it needs to plug and play with this larger strategic plan. And that can start happening tomorrow. Um, also facilitating that annual report card evaluation of this. Again, we've developed a tool for you all to do that. Um, to, to evaluate the plan, you know, check those accomplishments off the list, change things when they need to be changed. Um, but also reach out again to the community to say, hey, this is what we're doing. Um, and, and, you know, this is what you should be seeing. So, so those were the key strategies. And then finally, the report document, y'all have got it there in front of you. I'm, I won't go into it, but there's a lot in it. Um, th- th- that, that I've mentioned. One other thing that you may not have seen until, uh, until the last week is we've done an executive summary brochure of this whole thing. And again, this is another communication tool to, um, communicate to people that are involved in the process, what the results of it were, but also the people that weren't necessarily involved with the process, where you all are with the strategic plan. Um, and that poster, it's a large format poster. It's twenty-two by thirty-four. It's designed to kind of tell the story from, uh, process to planned framework, to vision and goals, to the, again, a detailed list of those key strategies. It folds up into a, an eight and a half by eleven brochure format. But it's also something that, you know, you could put on your, your wall in your office to be that constant reminder of, of, of what our priorities are and where we're going. Um, but that's one of those communication tools and that's, that's been delivered. And then finally, I'll mention these last two slides is implementation. How do we start? Where do we go from here? Um, I mentioned this at the very beginning. This is a community plan. This isn't just a, um, this isn't a plan for county government. It's the plan for the communities, the plan for the partnerships. In order for you to accomplish this over time, you've got to get the assistance of those, including the private sector, as I mentioned, to, to achieve this. It's a bridge to the comprehensive plan. I probably said that too much already. Um, I think one of the things that's important, and it goes back to that, that strategy board at the very end of this. This should be seen as a dynamic plan. It should evolve over time. This thing can change tomorrow as y'all start to implement it. As things get accomplished or as priorities change or as new things come up, it should be a living, breathing document. It should change. Um, it, it, it should be edited. And then I guess the last thing about it, general implementation, it is, again, broad-based. Um, this is a long-term plan. There are several things that you all have accomplished during this process that this plan um, ha- ha- had mentioned. But it's long-term. We need to make sure that we're deliberate and that we're focused over time with this. And I know that y'all have done that and the testament of that is what y'all have done with, with broadband. Um, so, so just to keep that in mind, I think it's more for our partnerships than anything else. And then finally, the first steps. These are the thing, there's loads of, um, different, uh, strategies in this report and this document. There are several that were identified as the key priorities, high priorities. But these are the things that we need to do to roll up our sleeves and get started. First thing is, is, um, to appoint a project manager internally to oversee the implementation of this. Rodney mentioned spark plugs earlier. Who that person is, you know, it could be Justin. It could be this new public, uh, information officer. It could be Rodney. I don't, who, it's someone to carry the flag and see this through implementation. They're kind of the owner from a staff standpoint. By the same token, I know that you all have had a lot of success with doing citizen-appointed committees. They, you know, the committee that helped us with this plan, uh, is part of that. Perhaps this is another, um, uh, project where you all could consider, um, an, an advisory board to help that project manager guide it over time and help, help implement it. And then, you know, you saw, you all see this either on a semi-annual or annual basis. Um, first thing that that project manager should do is share it with the partners. Again, a lot of this is things that the county would do and the county would lead. But a lot of this are things that your outside partners would lead. And sharing it with those partners' agencies is really to go over that strategy board and to make sure everything, everybody's on the same page. Not to say this is what we see that you all should be doing, but hey, this is what we heard. All of these partners were involved in this process. So I think this will, this, this plan is addressing some of the things that they are doing in partnership with you all already. But again, just to make sure everybody's working from the same general work plan. Um, one of the things that was mentioned in, uh, the draft plan workshop, which I thought was a, a great observation. A lot of this was leading to annual updates, annual evaluation, annual departmental strategic planning, annual budget. And it was mentioned that, you know, what, that we need to not focus on a year-end, year beginning. We need to be working on this throughout. And that was, that's one of the things that the project manager can do, I think, more internally than anything else. Is work with, um, staff here within the county to, um, you know, make sure that this plan is being implemented over time. Leading up to your annual budget process, the annual strategic plans. Again, I mentioned the departmental strategic plans that can begin tomorrow. Um, and then finally, I think the, the biggest thing that you, or the first thing that y'all need to do from a, from a, from a big project-type standpoint is start that comprehensive planning pro- process. And I hope that this plan itself will give you the foundation. It's the, it probably would be the first half of your comprehensive plan. But it'll give you the foundation to hit the ground running with that comprehensive plan as you go through it. So with that, that's, that's all I have. And I know we've talked about a few things, but certainly I'll entertain any other questions or comments that, or thoughts that you all have. I really appreciate your time.
Anybody have any comments?
Um, Mr. Chair, um, I'm, I'm going to keep my comments to a minimum. So I will say that, um, one thing, um, that I do want to do is acknowledge, um, those that, um, that were appointed or stepped forward and volunteered to be on this process. It has been a long process. I have to sit on some of the Zoom meetings and it has been some long, long Zoom meetings. Um, so I'm appreciative of all of those that, um, did, um, volunteer your time and, and your efforts and your, uh, your gifts and your talents, um, to be a, a part of this, um, strategic plan. And so, um, as I was reading one of the comments, it was like, um, finding people to be on boards and, uh, the, uh, versatility, uh, to be diversified. So I, I'm probably the most diversified one on the board. And I can tell you, I am always, um, running and seeking and asking. And so for me, um, of everything that we got out of this, um, I, I need to know the, the how-to. It's, it's what, what am I missing? And, um, I mean, we have a very capable person that's going to be a, um, public information person. However, um, I think that even sitting here, um, we can't let this plan, um, um, re, reestablish where her duties and responsibilities are. Um, I think that some of the things can be used to enhance, but, um, with the information that we got and it came from the citizens, it might be advisable to have a, a citizen's advisory board to take on this project. So with that, um, just thank you to everyone that took a part in this process.
Ms. Lockwood?
Yes, sir. Um, I, I just want to thank you guys for putting this together. You did a wonderful job communicating with the citizens. I would like to thank the citizens that took part in all those surveys that took the time to come to some of these meetings. I would like to thank the citizens that took part in all those surveys that took the time to come to some of these meetings and uh and really participate in in the plan. I mean, it is our county collectively. And the people that came out and and wanted to see us have a base for a plan. Uh the communication all the way through has been this next step leading to the comprehensive plan. And that's where we get to really kind of put the rubber to the road and and implementation. So uh I look forward to us moving into that phase as well. And, you know, the the folks that took part in the steering committee committed a lot of time to getting this done. I applaud you and thank you for putting in that effort. And and uh I think, you know, this is where we are now. Uh we've heard from folks that have expressed everything that they've expressed, whether we agree with it or not. I think it's time for us to take a look and and move forward, just like we always do. We already have. You know, we've we've made great progress on broadband. We've uh it it doesn't seem like it unless you've been coming to the meetings, you know. Nobody has internet service now, but we're working on it. So you know, it's not an overnight process and and neither was this plan. So I look forward to us continuing to move forward and taking some of those weaknesses and turning them into strengths and, you know, being able to communicate with our our friends and our neighbors that, you know, we are representing you in a fiscally sound way and open to communication and all of our meetings are open and hopefully it encourages participation. So, thank you.
Lockwood, anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Arnett, um through this whole document, forty-eight pages, we have villages, hamlets, crossroads and all this stuff. In forty-eight pages, there's never anything mentioned about personal property rights. And I my colleagues know, I'm a very big advocate on people having personal property rights unless they infringe on the rights of other people. I don't see that any anywhere. Does that fall anywhere in this strategic plan?
I I feel that um really, and 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 you you touched on the elements of this, which is the beginning of that. And that's this development vision that's in here. This is a vision. These are not rules and regulations. This is framing the conversation and maybe even that challenged conversation that you might be have when you get into that comprehensive plan. I feel that when you're talking about the comprehensive plan, when you're talking about development tools, whether it be um plan unit developments or 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 zoning, or um the tools that you will um put in place in the comp plan and after the comp plan, I feel like that's that's really where the details of personal property, public regulations are going to come in to play, not at the strategic plan level. But it's it's the 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 foundation of that conversation, I think, is is right there in that development vision.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone else? I know I I get frustrated up here on uh and on that one word. And my frustration on the part is because I don't know how to fix it. And I haven't feel like I haven't been told. But besides that, I do feel like it's very, the plan is very well put together. And I do want to thank the advisory board because I know they spent a lot of time on it. That is, I mean, I think it's a great plan. I think it's a great work and document. But I just need to know how to fix that distrust. And I hadn't been told that. And that's the frustrating part.
We'll get there.
Well, I I appreciate all of that. And I will say that one thing that I've learned about this community throughout this process is there's a passion for this place. From the people that live here and 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 love it, the people that want to change it, the people that want it to stay the same. There's a lot of that that's cooked into this conversation. Y'all see that, I'm sure, all the time. Um to the dedicated uh the uh staff that were involved in this plan from day one, to the steering committee that was helping us, to the comments today. One thing that I've learned about this place is you all love New Kent County. You love its values and you want to protect those um in the future. So hopefully this will be part of a tool where you can use to continue to protect who you are as a place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodney.
What a pleasure the board is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there is no other discussion, I think that um we'll find out at the vote, but I think that um that all of us are appreciative of the time and the energy and the effort that went into this plan. I do think that um even though there are words that are um sometime hurtful because we dedicate so much time and energy um to New Kent County and her citizens. Um and so I think with that being said, um that this can be a tool that will um to help this county continue to grow in a positive direction. And because of that, Mr. Chairman, I um move to adopt a proposed envisioned New Kent County strategic plan.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, poll members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Sears? Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next item, the the salary study budget transfer. Ms. Hathaway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um we are in the process of procuring a consultant to move forward with a salary study for for the county. Um as we discussed previously during the budget process, um our plan was to utilize existing FY twenty-one funding uh to fund the cost to that study. Um therefore, we are asking to transfer um one hundred thousand dollars from our contingency fund um for FY twenty-one um to go towards uh funding the salary study. I I just want to be clear, um we're not sure that a hundred thousand is going to be the cost, and I'm hoping that it's much less. We currently have an RFP out that's due July fifteenth. Um and I'll know the cost as soon as we've selected a consultant. But I believe a hundred thousand dollars should more than cover us, but I am hoping that the costs come in a lot less.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. This is something during the budget process, we decided we were going to move forward instead of waiting until next year. So is there any other comments on this?
Should we wait until we get an idea of what it's actually going to cost?
The problem is, this is FY twenty-one funding that goes away tomorrow.
Yeah.
Goes away at twelve o'clock tonight uh in the morning.
Saving a hundred thousand dollars. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Tiller?
I move to approve the transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the reserve for contingency to professional services for the purpose of conducting a comprehensive salary study.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Any other comments? None. Ms. Watkins, poll members?
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Yeah, sorry. Any other business?
I have a question for Ms. Hathaway. The uh second phase of the trash pickup, is that scheduled for July? When we outsource it?
I believe it's August. I need to look at the schedule. I I believe it it's August now. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Do you have anything, Ms. Hathaway?
I do, unless Mr. Lockwood wants to join. Okay. All right. Um before you, uh you should have a document in front of you um which is a draft document. And I apologize, I should have wrote draft on the document. I have more if you need. Um what it is, is a proposed grant and loan program uh to assist businesses with uh providing railway crossings. It's titled the Railway Crossing Assistant Grant and Loan Program. Um this program is envisioned that the board would work with the EDA. The EDA would actually issue the loans uh to bit to businesses that meet a certain set of criteria, which is listed on the sheet below. Um number one, that that criteria is that they must have a private road or driveway with an average annual daily traffic volume of more than two hundred trips um that crosses a a rail line. Um the business shall be locally or regionally owned, corporate-owned, national chains, uh would not be um entitled and probably would not need this assistance. Um they need to be up to date on local taxes and have a current business license. We are asking that they be operational uh for a period of up to two year, at least up to two years. Um and they shall agree to accept all liability and responsibility for ongoing maintenance. Um as you know, from recent events, and not just recent events, um I believe there's been four accidents this year involving railroad crossings. And I I believe that number's four. Um, you know, we see this act honestly as a temporary fix. Um our ultimate goal is to get a full crossing with arms and lights and and all of that. At specifically Rockahawk and Ed Allen's campground. Uh but there are also numerous other crossings as as well, focusing on them right now because of the traffic involved on those roads and and crossings. Um but in the meantime, what we're looking at is a um signage with flashing lights to draw drivers' attention that they need to stop um and look both ways and 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 look for a train. Again, this is just a temporary measure. Uh this assistance would provide funding for that. And the way that we envision this is uh we would offer a up to a ten thousand dollar grant. Um and also anything above that, up to a ten thousand dollar loan payable in sixty monthly installments with with no interest. Um our EDA has operated other grant programs in similar fashion. Uh therefore, we think that that they are more than capable of of handling this grant and loan program as as well. Um if the board decides to move forward with this, um I would present this to the EDA at their upcoming meeting, uh third meeting in July. And it's our hope that the following Monday, we begin the application process. And that's what's written in the guidelines.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Hathaway. I would I would just like to thank uh Mr. Lockwood for grabbing the bull by the horns on this issue. I mean, I know I had a we probably all had a few phone calls. We know there's an issue down there, but uh thank you for stepping up, playing for Mr. Hathaway to get something done.
Thank you, Thomas. If I may, Mr. Chairman, um I I just want to thank Rodney, Mr. Hathaway, our fine sheriff, Mr. McLaughlin, and Rick Opett for their input in getting this thing together. Um I I think it is simply a stopgap at this point. We're going to be drafting a letter to everybody that represents New Kent in any capacity because the the gated crossings are uh a bureaucratic nightmare, quite frankly. And 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 when you throw in the factor that most of these, all of these crossings are private roads, it makes it more difficult because the grant process that's out there now doesn't really recognize private roads as qualifying for a lot of these programs. So we're gonna, it's going to take a lot of effort. But in the meantime, you know, it, I guess you could say, in memory of of the most recent Kevin Pence and and Frieda Pruitt, who were killed in the in the last three months, two fatal accidents in the same stretch of track. Um I think it's it's a good way for us to move forward in making those crossings safer. Uh the the crossings are so close to where people turn off the road. There's not a lot of visibility. I was out at Rockahawk the other day and a gentleman stopped me and said, you guys need to do something out here. I was I it was my first time here. And when I pulled off the road, I was halfway across the tracks before I even realized it was a stop sign I just went through. So I think lighting it up and getting people's attention is a good way to move forward. Um I'm I'm I really appreciate everybody's effort in getting this going. And uh it's going to be a long road on the the gated crossings, but this is a good way for us to get started. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Any other comments? None?
If I can make a motion? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we move forward with the Railway Crossing Assistance Grant and Loan Program as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Any comments? Ms. Watkins, poll members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Anything else? Motion for adjournment?
I move.
Ms. Tiller? Ms. Watkins, poll members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Adjourned. Everybody have a enjoy the rest of your day.